May I say my apologies for the interruption. Father, we're so thankful that you're the caring God that you are and we just pray that you'll continue watching over our community. We pray that as board members that we make wise decisions that will be good to the youth as well as the community. And we pray for Roy Thompson and Robert Earlson, fathers of the hospital tonight. And I see you, God, you know what his problems are and we just pray that you put your hand on him as well as his family members. We pray all these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pray that the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Is there any amendments to the agenda? Any amendments to the agenda?
Mayor, I think we're trying to hire an attorney general.
We got one amendment on the police car policy.
Okay. Police car policy number six. I want to hold up on that dial catcher right now because Robert told me one night something else is service on that. That'll mean I can't put somebody's accident that comes in for a dial catcher. Number six would be the police car policy and it will move at number seven, public participation, number eight determined. I have motion to be all of this.
I make my motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the man who has presented for the record meeting on September 14, 2015, record meeting, I have a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
My motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the man who has presented for September 2015, I have a motion.
I have motion, please.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under Mayor's command, I have quite a few things to announce. Early voting has started. If you're not aware of it, most people are. It started Saturday, but it'll run until this coming Saturday, which that would be the 20th?
Seventeenth.
Okay, seventeenth. It is from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 PM at evening time. We have, of course, everybody knows, and I've got some ballots over on that table if you'd like to have one, just pick one up, but the election is for all officials is October 24th.
That's from May 8?
Sir?
That's from May 8?
Did they change the time on that? Or was that six? What is that, six and seven?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, six to eight.
I open up at 5:00.
Yep, six AM.
Six AM.
On the 24th. For our town, here we have two running for chief of police, Mike Hornet and Chief Roy Thompson. Also, I want to put a pitch out for our sales tax. Nobody likes the tax, but if you take into consideration that right now, whenever you go buy anything from Quincy, you pay at 9.25, your Ritter's 9%, Lee's bill runs by Lee Charles at 9.5%. This will greatly help funds for the town area bill by an increase of 4%. I appreciate your consideration, Roy. October the 20th, Ricky Moses is going to have lunch out in Ritter at the fairground. It started 10:30 AM that morning, October the 20th.
That's for senior citizens or for everybody?
That's for everybody. Maryville's homecoming will be October the 24th. Originally, when it came out, it would be at 10:00 AM because the students have to go to MacNeice to take their ACT tests that day. It's been moved to 2:00 PM, October 24th, the 2:00 PM Maryville's homecoming program. Our movie night is Monsters and Aliens. That's going to be the work if we got that air for Halloween, but that's the last Saturday of October. November the 13th, well, let me get this, November the 17th is our annual Veterans Day here at Mangalife Center in the First Baptist Church. There will be music, gumbo, and door prizes, drawing for door prizes. It was a big success last year and I'm looking for a good turnout this year. That will start at 10:00 AM. Mickey and his gang will be playing from 10 to 11, and then we'll have our ceremonies from 11 to 12, and then 12 lunch will be provided. Also, November 13th at the Maryville High School is a veterans program. And what time was that going to be?
2 o'clock.
2:00 PM on November 13th, Maryville has a veterans program.
Was it at school?
At Maryville High School, November 13th, 2:00 PM.
It'll be an auditorium run?
Yes, and it'll be the third through fifth grade students that are going to be putting this one on.
So I encourage everyone, it's one of the few freedoms that we still have left to go cast your vote on October 24th.
Absolutely.
So it's something that's thought hard and life-giving for our freedom, so I hope everyone will go vote on October 24th. Living young under new business, we have a candidate here tonight, Mr. Biscuit Smith. He's a candidate for representing for District 32. Don't let him get up and talk.
Well, I appreciate that very much, Mayor, and Maryville Council, and Mr. Welberen, rest of guests. Thank you all so much for allowing me to come out here this evening and speak to you all. For those that don't know, my name is Will Welberen Smith. Everybody calls me Biscuit, and that was a little bit. I guess the biggest question I get asked is how did I get that name? All of my brothers and sisters were a bunch of blond-haired, red-headed, blue-eyed, green-eyed kids, and I was the youngest and I came along with this black hair and brown eyes and dark skin, and my sister said I looked like a little burnt biscuit and stuck for the rest of my life. I am, like the mayor said, I am running to be our next representative for District 32. If you don't mind, I'm going to use my phone because it keeps me in track. If I don't, I tend to ramble a little bit, but the, um, I like to explain to people that I'm a Christian, a husband, a father, and I'm a businessman. I am married to my lovely wife, Casey. She's a second-grade school teacher at South Bullard. We live north of Longview, out in the country there. We attend Longview Baptist Church. My wife and I, we have five children, Caitlin, Clay, Vado, Bo, and Colton. Oldest is 21 and actually lives here in the junction with her husband and our 14-month-old grandbaby, and the youngest one is five. I'm a carpenter by trade. I work with my brothers Reese and Marion Smith, and I had all of my adult life. I've been blessed, I consider blessed, to be able to earn a living and work here throughout this district. I've built several homes in Maryville, Bancroft, Junction. There's not many communities that I've been able to, that I can go in, that I haven't worked on somebody's house, built something or something. And that's one of the things that really compels me to want to run, to be a servant. I'm a strong believer in the fact that you give back to your community in whatever form or fashion that you find yourself in. That might be a little league coach, that might be volunteering at your church. Somehow, some way, you give back. I happen to find myself currently as a Bullard Parish Police Juror. That's one of the ways that I felt like I could give back to my community. I've been in that position for about eight years now. Was able to serve as a parish president for two of those years. Actually stepped down, was able to step down from being a parish president so that I could pursue the goal that I have right now to be our next state representative. Along with being a carpenter by trade and being a police juror, I'm also a small businessman. I own a company called Thunder Valley Archery. We build and manufacture over 32 different models of broadheads and different archery equipment for archery enthusiasts worldwide. All manufacturing that we do are done right here in the United States. We're actually one of the last manufacturing companies when it comes to archery equipment in the United States that actually build the old carbon steel, American-made steel broadheads that's here. Most of your broadhead industries have all moved over to Thailand, China, places like that, but we still have a cottage industry here and we still build good American-made steels, so that's something that I'm very proud of. I like to explain to people a little bit about what I've been able to accomplish, just give them a snapshot of being a police juror for eight years so you can maybe understand where I come from and what I like to do. If you go down 171 and you get down to where one now he feels back off of it, Highway 12, you'll find an overpass right there, the old town of Radley is there. On both sides of that road, you'll see that there's parks being made. Eight years ago, we had a recreation district that had been formed for about two years, but they never could get any traction. They never could get off the ground very good. I talked to DOTD to giving us 21 acres on the east side of that highway there. There you'll find a big pond, it's all in clover leaf, we have a half a mile concrete, lighted concrete walkway, more things that we're building. We've just been building within our means as we can afford on that side. On the opposite side of the road, we were able to work with Representative Mr. Brett Geeman that's down in that area, that's represented that area for the past 12 years, and we were able to work with our Senator John Smith to be able to secure some funds from the state. About $87,000 we were able to bring back so that we purchased 24 acres on the west side of the road. With that, that gave the traction for the individuals that wanted to, they serve on our recreation district down in that area, which encompasses Ward 6 and Ward 4. They were able to pass a small village, they were able to convince the individuals in that area to pass a very small village to where, when they passed that village, we then went back, I went back with myself and a police juror and Mr. Brett Harris, we went back to the Representative, Mr. Geeman, and our Senator John Smith, and we were able to levy that village for, with the capital outlay process so that instead of looking at a $4 million park, you're looking at about a $7 million park. So that we weren't able to put all that on the run of the local tax base and everything. We were able to have small village and even get basically more buying free to bug with it. Along with that, out at Bundick's Lake, you know, so long we've looked at Bundick's Lake, Bundick's Lake's been treated as a liability for the parish. The parish considered it a liability. They didn't want to work with it, didn't want to stay considered it as a liability. Well, we kind of have started a process where we want to change people's mind. We want to show them that it's not a liability, it's actually an asset for the parish. We were able to take and work with the DOTD and the wildlife and fisheries and be able to draw the lake down, straighten and redo. We took about 400 stumps out of the lake so we could straighten over five, about five and a half miles of boat lanes. With that, we were able to clear out several miles of canals that go back that had silted in over the years so people that owned property there and old dilapidated property that would never settle because it didn't have lake access, it technically did, but not in a silted-in canal, we were able to clear all that out, clean all that out. We were able to take and secure funds with our police jury, with our general fund, so that we dedicated a line item of several thousand dollars. It's about $10,000 every year it rolls over and it will roll over as long as the police jury sees fit to secure that area so that we can keep those boat lanes marked so it's an admissible lake. And the individuals from there, it's the hope that with, we started a commission there so that we can work with that lake and work with the people in that lake and be able to, for the betterment of not only that lake but this whole parish. I'm a true believer that whatever benefits the town of Maryville benefits the parish as a whole, and whatever benefits the Bundick's Lake area also benefits the parish as a whole, and everybody is in this together with it. You know, along with that is when I was president, I was able to work with our judges, our clerk of court, district attorney, everybody, we finally came together with our police juries and everything, and we were able to secure funds so that we were able to start remodeling our courthouse. We're about three or four months into that process, we're going to put about $12 million into that courthouse so that we can secure the fact for the future where our parish is growing, where it will not be long you'll see a third judge. We took a proactive step, instead of waiting to the point where, hey, we need a third judge and we don't have any place to put him, we decided to take a proactive step, work with everybody that's involved, and explain to the people that, you know, at some point in your life, you will, if you live in this parish, you will go through that courthouse. You will do something in that courthouse, so it's the people's courthouse. That's what we wanted to make it out to be, so we have, we're making it where it's three courtrooms, two elevators, it's going to be a beautiful remodel. We're going to be touring it tomorrow if anybody wants to come by. I think it's about 4 o'clock. We're going to be looking for progress this year. Just to give you kind of an idea of how I feel about finances, when I became a police juror eight years ago, I had, I encountered all kinds of budgets. We have about $30 million with the police jury that we handle with budgets of different varying sizes and everything, dedicated funds and all, but if you look at Ward 4, Ward 4, geographically speaking, is directly right in the middle of the parish, all the other wards encompassed around it. Ward 4 consists of about 147 miles of parish road. It brings in a revenue of about $850,000, $875,000 a year. When I came on board as a police juror, two-thirds of that debt, of that revenue was levied to debt. You can legally do that, but they had levied up to the max two-thirds. You were so constrained, you couldn't do anything. Every piece of equipment was financed, roads were financed, you couldn't hire people. It took about three years of just simply living within our means, getting rid of equipment that we didn't need, working with equipment that we might not have wanted to work with, but we did, until now, I'm proud to say that, and has been for the past five years, that that ward is completely debt-free. Now we can sit there and we, every piece of equipment on it is nice, it's new, it's paid for. Just because we live within our means and we're able to budget for next year, we're able to sit there and look in October for the roads we're going to be making and taking care of next year. We're also, just because we made good fiscal responsible decisions, we're able to sit there and hire individuals that we were never able to hire before, we're able to employ individuals from that area. That'll give you kind of an idea of how I feel about budgets and how I feel about spending money. You know, I guess if there was a general theme about how I like to handle my political aspects in my life is that it would be working well with one another. It's working well for the senator that's on hand, the representative that's on hand, the police jury, the town and city councils and the mayors, and the different individuals from the different municipalities, to be able to bring everybody together for the kind of good for everybody. You know, a little snapshot of what I've been able to do, I like to explain to people what I want to do. I give them a small kind of a, not a State of the Union, but a State of Louisiana type of address to it. You know, if you, I'm the type of person that believes in smaller government. I think that government can and should not be everything for everybody. If you look back eight years, eight to nine years, our government in St. Louis, and our budget has grown over $9 billion. Our budget right now is somewhere around $26 to $27 billion. So we bring in a lot of money into the state. If you go back and you just take the past eight years, eight years ago, we had a billion-dollar surplus. When Ms. Catherine Blanco left office, there was a billion-dollar surplus. That was spent immediately by the legislatures in that time. They spent it immediately, and every year since then, just due to nothing more than bad spending practices, we ran into mid-year budget cuts, mid-year deficits, and that is snowballed. It went from 200 million on and on and on until this past year, we had 1.6 billion with a B deficit in St. Louis. The only way that our legislature as a whole, I mean, I was over there in Baton Rouge listening, nobody said anything about, let's cut this, let's work with this. They could have. They could have seven years ago, they could have six years ago, they could have done just a little bit of cuts and stopped all of this, just a freight train of bad decisions from happening, but they didn't. They chose to spend one-time monies over and over, and it would be kind of, kind of like if you and I, I guess the best way to describe the spending practices of our state so far is if you and I, say we went over to Grand Pass, and we won $6,000 and we came back and we bought a car with it, a brand-new car, and it was enough for us to buy it, but when we got it home, we realized three months later that our budget at our house doesn't afford us to afford the no-land, and that's exactly what we've been doing. We've been putting one-time money into the budget and trying to prop up a budget that should have been adjusted years ago. And it's caused us to do things like, eight years ago, you fast forward to now, if you have a child that's going to college, tuition has increased 70 to 75% on that tuition. You look at what they did with the $1.6 billion budget this year to address that, the only thing they did to address that budget was taxes. They taxed us to the tune of $750 million, and they said, now, don't worry, it's just businesses that they taxed us on. Now, if you look at $750 million on businesses, which by the way, nobody will feel this for another year, they will not feel it right now, it'll be a couple of years from now before you feel the $750 million on top of businesses. You know, to me, if you, so the only people that are going to be affected are people that work for a business, own a business, or do business for a business, which pretty much is everybody. So on top of that, they saw fit to add another $150 million in fees. Now, these types of fees are, well, like me, I have a 17-year-old son, I bought him a little vehicle, had to go and get it registered, and to do that in May of this year, it cost you $18 and change. Well, they saw fit, they saw no problem with adding $50 on top of that, so now it's almost 70 bucks to go get a vehicle registered that used to cost less than 20. And it's those types of fees that they didn't mind imposing on us, not because anything happened, just because they've spent the money wrong. And they didn't mind, instead of fixing what they did, making the hard decisions that they're supposed to make, they didn't mind sitting there imposing that on us. I had a conversation with a gentleman, a legislature, it's been a four-year legislature, I had a conversation with him, Miss Sunday. He seems to think that there's no problem with this next year coming up to impose a lot of those things and to fix a lot of those things on the backs of municipalities and police juries. And like I tried to explain to that gentleman in the nicest way I could, I said, you know, I can speak for the parish Bullard, it's been here, the police jury's been here a little over 100 years, right out of 100 years. I said, in 100 years, we've never ran a deficit. And I said, if we did, if we saw that we were, we realized we had to cut back. God forbid, we had to let people go, we had to get rid of equipment, we had to fix, and we would fix it between our means. The only reason, like I explained to him, the only reason we're in this state that we are is nothing but bad spending practices, and if we don't watch what we're doing, they're going to impose that on the backs of local municipalities, local police juries, when we didn't cause it. None of us in this room caused it. You know, one way or another, I like to explain to people that we, we're getting a new governor in January, whether you like it or not. We're getting a new governor. We've basically had a governor so far that's been kind of MIA for the past eight years. We're getting a new governor in January. Hopefully, whoever that is is somebody that's going to be willing to work with them, because we deserve it. We're going to need it, they're going to have to. What we need to do, in my opinion, is make sure that we're sending legislatures up there that are willing to do the same, willing to work hard, and you're not going to fix it this next year. We didn't get into this mess in here, it's going to take several years. You're going to have to take several years of a commitment of being able to work, being able to work hard to get on the committees and do what you're supposed to do so that you make sure that your municipalities and your areas are not left out when you're fixing this problem that comes to you. Now, all that being said, I like to wrap up everything by explaining to individuals, and I can be kind of repressed without explaining that. The position that I'm running for is currently held by the incumbent, Ms. Dorothy Soudan. I've known her and I've known her husband, Mr. Herman Ray, all my life. I like to explain to people, and I'm not running against Ms. Soudan. I'm running for our district, I'm running for you, I'm running for my children, I'm running for what the future holds for our people. So with, to me, we're at a critical time in the state of Louisiana. We need people that are going to be making decisions and willing to work with others and willing to work hard and be committed, not just for the next couple of years, but for the next 20 years, to be committed about what we're going to do for our area. I always like to open it up to anybody that has any questions. I know that, you know, not everybody has questions, but I'd much rather give you the chance and the opportunity to not hear any than not offer. So with that, does anybody have any questions?
What do you think about the governor, the president, right now?
Which governor's?
The governor now.
Oh, the governor right now?
How do you think about the president?
I tell you, I have high hopes, like I have high hopes for every governor when they get elected for our state. I'm one of those that I feel like can pray for all elected officials. It's what you want, it's what we need, we all hope that we have a good thing, but I can tell you, about two or three years into his, into his first term, I started having my doubts. I had gone over to Baton Rouge, I've gone over to Baton Rouge all, this is, you know, this position is not something I woke up yesterday and said, boy, it'd be cool to be a representative. This is something I've been wanting to do and working for most all of my life. So I've gone over to Baton Rouge, and I've been used to governors that would walk the halls, would work for legislatures, would ring them up and say, this is what we want to do, wouldn't just try to shove things down everybody's throat and not be there. And that's what we've seen, and the way our constitution in the state of Louisiana is written, our governor is extremely, extremely powerful. You have to vote somebody in there, we need to vote somebody in there that is willing to work, willing to be involved, because if you don't, it's kind of the old hand job. If the cat's gone, the mice play. So if I tell you a little bit about how I feel, where we've been led to, that's why we're here in this state. Good question. Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, and y'all forgive me, I'm a teacher. What is your views on the current education system we have now?
The way I look at education, because my wife's a teacher, my mom just retired 37 years as a teacher. I grew up in a teaching family, my dad taught. I believe education starts at home. I believe that education goes from there to a local body of individuals, and I believe education stops at the state. I don't think that, I, our United States government has no business in the education system, okay? They need to be sticking to doing the few things that the Constitution gives them the right to do in education at one. They need to leave that to the state. That being said, there again, you go back to the question about our governor, they've made a complete turmoil about our education system. Our teachers are sitting there, don't know which way to go. We have an individual, John White, that was allowed to come down here from Massachusetts or somewhere like that, somewhere that we're not from. Surely, somebody in the state of Louisiana was smart enough to step up to that position instead of hiring somebody from Massachusetts. I think that was one of the bad decisions they made, and there again, it has just catastrophically went over and over. We've had implementation of Common Core where nobody really knew what it was, nobody knew how it went. To me, if you wanted to bring in something like Common Core, I think that particular word must be demonized a little bit. I think our children should be held to high standards. I think that the children in Louisiana are smart enough to compete with anybody in the world, and I have five of them going to school. That's what I, I expect all of my children to come in with the best grades they possibly can. But all that being said, the individuals that have the Common Core and everything, if you wanted to implement something like that, test that out. if you wanted to implement something like that, test that out in some parish or somewhere that wanted that to be tested out, don't do a whole statewide implementation. I, I'm just a simple country boy, but I, I can promise you, that would have worked. You could have worked out all the bugs, you could have fixed the curriculum, you could have got rid of the Eureka Math, and you could have found books that, that would have worked better than that, and then you could have said, all right, we're going to start this, phase it in with this first grade class on through, and when they get to twelfth grade, it's going to be all over. But to bring it in and just say, everybody's in Common Core, and you'll see right now, I know y'all probably kept it with the paper about Common Core, they're not issuing the test results, and they're not going to until they get done, John, John White is holding those, because he's not going to implement them and show until after the twenty-fourth of October, I think it's on the twenty-eighth is when it was just officially agreed to do. That secures a lot of your vested board races. I, I think individuals do not pay enough attention to vested board. It's always been kind of a, a position, I know for myself, speak for myself, you kind of rubber stamp as far as rubber not, but it's extremely important. They're, they're one of our last stop blocks, if you will, when, when it comes to, to taking care of our education system, and to be able to make sure that things like Common Core or any bad implementation of something is stopped and the parish can take care of it. Anybody else? Yes, sir, Mr. Black?
This guy, I, I'm sure you were, you are aware that, that recently, I, 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 that recently, a low cap was staffed on the film, on the film industry. I see, you, 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 you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
I, 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 well, I, I, yeah, I mean, like, our governor, I, I, basically rubber stamped it immediately without hesitation, and, and in my opinion, that cap is, is driving, is driving the film industry, and that is, that is, that is very prevalent in Louisiana, and it has been for the, for the recent, for the recent years, and that's Georgia, which has no care.
Yes, sir. I think that there is, is bad spending practice, Mark, they, they, we had a one-point-six-billion-dollar deficit this year. That deficit comes out of our general fund for the state. The state's general fund is somewhere averages around nine billion dollars. One-point-six-billion dollars had to be taken out. We give away seven-point-five to seven-point-eight billion dollars in tax credits, one of those being the movie tax credits. There is no checks or balances on those tax credits that we give away. That movie tax credit started out, if I remember correctly, somewhere around the two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar range, and that was not bad. Bring the movie industry, that, that was two-hundred-and-fifty million. It wasn't a cap, by the way, that was just two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars that they projected would, that's what it was going to cost us to get them to come here and get a tax credit. And every year since then, it has grown as the industry grew, you had more people asking for the tax credit, and now they're in a pickle, because they have to get those tax credits for people, because they're like, look, you're going to get these tax credits over ten years, so they budget it, you can't just take it away, it's unconstitutional, you're going to get sued for taking that away. So they have to figure out, and, and if they would have just, when they started, said, okay, if that's the projected cost was two, two-point-five mil, or two-hundred-and-fifty million is the projected cost of what it's going to be for this tax credit, hey, when we hit two-point, or two-hundred-and-fifty million, a buzzer needs to go off. Somebody needs to be raising their hand, say, hey, where we're here, um, what do we do now? Do we grow this, do we stop this, do we work with it? And do we go back and look at other tax credits? You have a solar industry tax credit that's set there that, I mean, I tell you what, if I could get my broadheads that I build tax, a tax credit, I think, I wouldn't care what kind of broadhead I would build, as long as you were giving me a tax credit, and a lot of the solar panels are that way. So it is those, every industry that gets a tax credit gets audited, it needs to be audited even more, and every one of them needs to have some type of checks and balances. Not necessarily a cap, because why would you cap one that's doing good? I mean, I, I would love to give a business seven billion dollars, all of the tax credit, if they were bringing in twenty billion dollars to our state in income and revenue. So I mean, ones that are doing good needs, need to be there, ones that are doing bad need to be scratched off the books and taken care of. That's just my opinion, but we need to have a governor that's going to be able to get in there and make, make that happen if council it. Anybody else? Well, thank y'all so much for your time, thank you for the questions, and I would appreciate y'all considering me on October twenty-fourth. Thank y'all. If you don't mind, I'd rather engage my governor, so thank y'all very much. Sir? Um, it, it, you know, I tell people, I want to say it's like fifty-six, but I tell them, just go to representative and vote for Biscuit. Biscuit's going to be on there, you can't, you can't step away from anybody. Appreciate it, y'all, thank you all, all righty.
Okay. The next slide, man, one, this, this was, over all my patients. Does everybody look that?
I have to.
The trade.
You know, I have.
Give me a phone.
Okay.
She's, she's, yeah, she's not, you can't definitely.
They, 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 they,[1796.12]